K L T V Soundcheck, K L T V Soundcheck.
K L T V Soundcheck.
Red Square, a young man stands up and yells Brezhnev is an idiot. KGB is on him just like that. Take him to the magistrate immediately. The magistrate says, young man, that was not a good thing to do. You get three days for insulting the premier and seven years of hard labor for divulging a state secret. He just divulges a state secret.
Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think you'd like a motion on the on the minutes. I did my usual perusal of the minutes and I moved to approve those minutes.
You have a motion to approve minutes? Any questions, comments, corrections?
Oh, I did forget to welcome Mr. Shea.
Yeah. They actually let him back in the country. Okay, seeing none, we'll call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I do have an item that is requested to add to the agenda. So it's an item from IT on renewal of some software malware malware scanner for all county computers. If you're okay with that, we'll add it to the agenda.
I'm okay with that, of course.
I'll probably tackle it in in motion items and not make it part of consent. Okay?
Okay. Yeah.
We'll run down consent agenda item under agreements, contracts, bid awards. We have a completion letter with CNR Homes and Construction Services. They redid the roof on our Health and Human Services building. They actually completed that in March and this is just a completion letter. Inter local agreement with Rotary Foundation Woodland for further expansion of Scott Hill Park and Sports Complex. We gave them $50,000. Well, we didn't. It came out of the county sales tax proceeds, the lodging tax. Temporary item three, temporary construction easement for right away purposes from Joey Graham Thomas for the Italian Creek Road Culvert Replacement Project. For a temporary easement right away purposes from Kevin and Connie Brown for the same project, Italian Creek Road Culvert Project. We received a federal energy regulatory copy of a federal energy regulatory commission letter on on an application. They ask for further information from the Pacific Corps. And I have a letter for dated 7/15/24 from Jennifer Ray Keen, Port Woodland Executive Director, Director regarding the use of tax increment financing to fund a suite of public improvement projects. And I thought I would try to explain that a little bit when I get through the rest of this. Number six, we have a we ratified a voucher for drainage drainage improvement district number one for expenses in the amount of 580623. And then we had vouchers this past week in the amount of 3 million 014429 and 13 cents. Okay, I'll back up to that under correspondence at letter B. What the Port Woodland wants to do is I'll just give you experts on it. There's an RCW 39 dot 114 dot 040. There, Port Woodland is notifying you that is considering the formation of a taxing increment area. TIF works by utilizing the taxes from properties increased value to fund infrastructure projects within a designated area referred to as a tax increment area. It's a financing tool that captures and redirects annual tax increases to fund a list of projects within the TIA. Could be railroad, stormwater, those type of things. The TIA they're looking at is proposed is north of Dyke Road and the Lewis River Road, west of Wayland Road and east of Columbia River and generally south and west of 55 as shown on the they sent us a sheet. So they're giving us notification. There'll be some hearings on this and and coming down the line, but that's what they're looking at. That's what a tax improvement tax increment area is. Okay. Probably be further questions on that as we get down.
And the comment on that one?
Yeah, absolutely.
We don't really have anything we can say or do about it. So that's just a notification. It does. It does make it interesting that most of that is agricultural there at the moment and the improvements. I don't know quite how to tackle this. This is kind of intertwined. The that the Port of Woodland actually has some pretty nice plans, some long term plans that I would implement ASAP if we had the money, but it's we're talking tens to maybe hundreds of millions in order to do all that. I'm not comfortable with thinking I'm going to tax somebody because I'm going to improve this over here and 10 years from now, maybe the value will go up. And trying to tax today for value tomorrow is one of those things that I think probably nine out of 10 times flops. And I I'm not sure how to make sense out of it, but I am ambivalent in this case. I know their plans are good, their funding source. If the plans were that good, is there another way of funding that that might involve bonding in some in some way?
Yeah, yeah. Good, good comments. And that's what I wanted to because you probably haven't aren't familiar with this. And so just trying to like Commissioner Morton said, there's not a lot that we have to say into this, but just so you understand what's going on. Ron?
All the plans may be great, but if you can't get to it, it doesn't mean a thing. What my observation and trying to get off the freeway and through Woodland into there with the three roundabouts in a row is a nightmare. And so we can sink all the money, all of our public money we want into those port areas, et cetera. But if you don't have access, it's a waste of money.
Yeah, just a second on that. There that that certainly is a true statement and it certainly seems applicable in many instances. Part of the ports plan would eventually include another exit, another bridge over the Lewis. And that would be a great thing to do. They could actually do that in a decent way. So exit 21 is no longer quite the sore spot. Now, the roundabouts, I don't understand. I'm very comfortable with with the roundabout, but if you take an intersection that comes in orthogonally.
Three roundabouts in a row is a nightmare.
No, I understand that. And and but even tackling a single roundabout itself, we were in an industrial area. Roundabouts aren't the best thing for for in for heavy traffic, for heavy truck traffic. And what happens is that we tend to think that the area that an orthogonal intersection would occupy is the area where you're going to put your going to put the roundabout. But in fact, you need to take twice as much area or some such thing, and we never do. And that same objection I've had over we're building new stuff. We don't include the ample lanes for a bicycle. Amazingly, it's hard for me to say that word. Anyhow, it's I don't disagree with you.
Yeah. And this is just a notification that they're headed down that path and they have to hold public comments and hearings. So should hopefully will participate. Yeah.
Yeah, it's interesting that the port and stuff like that does have impact on the entire county. So but I don't know if the entire county will have a say in there when they when they do the the CEP or NEPA that they have to do.
Okay, any other questions on consent?
There was something. Item number one has the re-roofing or the roof, yeah, the re-roofing. And the gentleman who was just at the microphone knows a good deal about construction. I think I think the building has no more than a 10,000 square foot pattern or image. Yeah. Does that price seem to you high?
I've worked hard to maintain what I have.
My real issue with most of this is that with the schools and everything else, if you take care of the roofs, if you maintain them, if you rejuvenate them periodically, they last a long time. But the easy way is to hire a big contractor to replace and do other things. So I take a different approach. I work hard on maintenance rather than replacement.
And there's not a problem with it. It was a job well done. There were no change orders on it. It just the public needs to appreciate that things are very expensive as done by us. There's what do we have there? You saw the Q and A?
Oh. We're getting comments. I can't hear anything on Zoom. Okay. Any other questions on consent?
Yes. Would you like a motion?
Please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda as has been presented.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Questions, comments further. Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Let's vote aye. Thank you. Okay, we'll take up the one item, motion item that we added today. It's a proposal to renew malware malware bytes, the primary malware scanner for all our county computers, clients and servers. This software scans for both incoming and any existing threats and reacts to mitigate when malware is detected. It's a one year, cost of one year term beginning 7/30/24 is 5260525. And it looks like this was a cost increase of about 3%. Did I explain that well enough, Travis?
Yes, very good explanation. Thank you.
So just some ancillary questions before, maybe others will have questions. At home, I get solicitations from 3,500. Okay, I'm exaggerating, but at any number of people that purport to do the same thing, how did we choose malware?
You know, this is one of the top leading products.
Identify yourself first.
Sure. Travis Foschini, Director of IT. This is one of the leading commercial products for use in an environment of our size. It has some advantages over several of the others. You may have heard of CrowdStrike recently in the news, for example. This is a competitive product, a CrowdStrike, which caused airline disruptions and other major events in the past week. So this is just one of the other leading products. This is probably more appropriate for a business of our size than maybe that product. That product is typically used in much larger environments. So this this one is a little bit easier to operate in general.
Are these contracts negotiable? Like, do you contact them and say, we can afford this much, but not that much kind of thing?
Yeah, generally speaking, we go directly to the vendor for this particular product or to the software provider. I've inquired about discounts. They've been unwilling to provide any additional discount. However, in this past year, while it is roughly a 3% increase, that increase is largely because we've changed the product. So we've basically changed quantity of units and we've increased the cost per unit, but instead we have additional services with that product. So now we have some services like auto threat mitigation. So it's using AI to detect particular threats and automatically remedying them in some cases.
And this software, does it have any strings on your staff in the sense of you get, we sometimes buy software and then you spend a lot of time and effort to craft it for your needs. Do we have that same issue here?
No, if we changed products, we would have a lot more time and effort to change products. But this product has been in use at the county for for a number of years. It's also been very helpful in mitigating threats in the past that the county has experienced. So we have some experience with the product and moving to another product would not only cost oftentimes cost more in licensing, but it would also cost significantly more in implementation.
And this isn't maintenance, right? This is we didn't buy malware bytes. Or like like with PeopleSoft, we pay annual maintenance fees, but we paid upfront several million dollars.
Yeah, in PeopleSoft, it's a perpetual license. So you pay a significant amount upfront and then you pay an annual fee to keep that product current. In this case, it's a software subscription license. So we pay for it and it's only good for for a particular term. And your use is limited to that term. And in this case, it's it's approaching quickly, which is why we added it to the agenda, you know, in order to try and renew before the end of that term.
Does the risk pool, the Washington County's risk pool offer any suggestions in in this area?
I have not looked into that.
Okay, yeah, it, it's, I, I suspect, what was it? Three years ago, we had, uh, an incident or so and the risk pool paid a lot of money to help us out. And so they, it, it, it is, there is a nexus in there of some kind. That's all the questions I have.
Okay.
So are we paying merely money for software or is there technical support backup? As we well know, the scammers are working harder and faster than what all of our programming can do. So emergencies occur.
Yeah, this is a software license and includes vendor support.
It does.
It, it does include vendor support. Yes.
And is that support something that you can get to or is it across the sea somewhere in some other country?
I, I don't know. I know that it's available twenty four by seven. Most companies have a follow the sun model. I, I'm not familiar with theirs specifically.
Well, it doesn't help if I call and I'm speaking to some country that I can't hardly even understand their language. The software's, that technical support isn't worth a hoot.
Well, I, I treat you the same way, Ron. That's a joke.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the software license renewal that has been presented for the total cost of fifty two thousand, six hundred and five dollars and twenty five cents.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Last chance, comments, questions? I see none. We'll call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Also vote aye. Thanks, Travis. Give you quick update, uh, tomorrow, no meetings. Uh, I'm, uh, the only one around tomorrow, so there's, uh, no meetings next week. All three of us should be sitting here. I think Commissioner Weber is, is back. We had this afternoon, yeah, we, we had rescheduled Public Works to this afternoon, but there, they didn't really have any updates on things. So, so, uh, that's been canceled this afternoon too. So it's been light week. I had a couple of weeks ago, and I don't see him here today, a question on, uh, work we've been doing on the juvenile center and, um, we got an update from the architect, Aida, Aida, however you say it, has finished with, uh, their design and their, their estimate. So, uh, right at this moment, we're working on, uh, meeting with the group that I put together to kind of review that and I get questions and answers and their input. And then, uh, will I, then, once I've had their input and their chance to ask some questions on it, it'll come before, uh, the commissioners. And we'll basically make a decision if we think it's on the right path or it's not gonna work or where it goes from there. So that was kind of answered to a question I got a couple of weeks ago. So that's, that's getting close. I am out for about ten days or so, so I don't know when that meeting gets scheduled, but, uh, it, the, the work has been completed. And I think that was the big question. Anything else we got going on? Ron?
The opening of the fair?
Yeah, yeah.
I notice on your upcoming events, the July thirtieth Board of Health, uh, meeting is canceled. That certainly is because we can't find anything to do. So is there some reasoning behind that?
We're just in the, in the midst of electing a new board and, and on the eighth, we'll start interviews. We're collecting applications. So we just, uh, canceled the July thirtieth until we get the new board seated.
But in the meantime, you have the existing board members that are there. So there's, it, I, I understand, but at the same time, the past members have carried on and there isn't anything on, that can be done on the agenda, apparently.
I don't, I don't think there was anything pressing enough that it was, you know, typically Board Health only met quarterly and we've stepped them up to pretty much monthly, but I think there wasn't anything, if there, if, I think I'm speaking for the chair, I'm not the chair of that, but I think if there was something significant, he would, he would have continued with that meeting.
Okay, thank you.
That does bring up, I think, our first round of interviews. What I saw is we're looking on the eighth. And then there'll be some follow up. The twelfth. It's a Monday. Yeah, okay. Sorry. First round is twelfth, and then I think there's another date too. The twentieth. Anything else?
Public comments yet?
Yeah. If you want a public comment, you've been out of the country.
It's true.
How do you know what's going on?
Facebook.
Oh. Must be true.
Well, what I wanted to say is that, uh, where I've been in the Philippines, uh, their road construction, now I was there ten years ago and then recently. And in those ten years, their road construction is insane. And I had a chance to go out, ride around a whole bunch, and it's just like roads are going in everywhere there. Bridges, the whole nine yards there. And their roads are, they don't have a freeway, but it's basically like North Pacific, about that size of road.
Okay.
All, all over the place. And, and like where I, where I would drive out to stay, there was a new road, uh, surface going on there. I'm happy to say that where I live here, uh, the chip seal got done while I was gone, so I didn't have to drive through the rocks and oil. But, uh, um, my stretch of road where I live here is, is just excellent. I just can't ever praise the road crew, uh, our road department here enough. I just wish they were here today because I want to just, every time I think about it, my little street is really well done. And, uh, but I gotta say, uh, the Philippines, they are kicking our ass on roads, man. I mean, in a big way.
Are those, uh, there, there are always a lot of issues. Is, uh, is the labor done, uh, with the same kind of machinery we use here or much more manual?
A little of both, uh, much more manual though. Yeah.
Yeah.
But they have, you know, paving stuff and, uh, backhoes and that kind of thing. But like their cement trucks are, are a bit different, you know, and, uh, there's a lot more guys out there digging with shovels too. Yeah.
There's, uh, it's always an interesting question. I think infrastructure has been proven time and again to be important and it really has to precede economic activity, yet you pay with future dollars also.
Well, you know, it kind of brings to mind what they keep trying to do out in Woodland. You know, they've got all that land out there. They want to develop in all kinds of ways. But it's just like Ron said, you know, there's no way to get to it, you know, and, uh, that's gotta be the first step, really. You know, you got, you gotta be able to get to the spot before you can do anything. And Woodland is in such a bad spot there because you got that Lewis River and they're talking about, I know they're talking, they've been talking about putting another bridge there. You know, but where's that bridge going? You know what I mean? Uh, if you do it down from the lowland there and try to make something, you're gonna end up at that, um, casino exit is where you're gonna go. I, I think, you know, I mean, there's no other room there for it. So they're kind of painted into a corner in Woodland and, um, you know, they got a lot of great land to develop, but it's, you just can't get to it.
Yeah, it, it's whatever, like we, we have given, uh, two point six million to help, uh, deal with Exit twenty one problems, but that's, and that'll be added on to about another ten million that comes from elsewhere. That's just, just a Band-Aid and I, I you know, you're such a
I don't know what you do.
You're just in such a tough spot because it's right on the county line anyway. So really, if you go from Calitz County and you want to build a bridge across the Lewis, you're immediately in Clark County. And then you got the feds on top of that. It's like, uh, it's, it just doesn't look like anything can really go there, besides the fact that you're immediately climbing a big hill if you go over a bridge there. Um, which for truck traffic is gonna make it difficult. Uh, you know, you'd have to build six lanes there to accommodate all that. I don't, I don't think it can be done, really.
One of the major problems for I five is getting from, uh, Woodland to, up to Calama.
Yeah.
And, uh,
Well, you know, they got that spot that slides on the freeway occasionally, right? And blocks I five. That's, uh,
We, we, we do, in the spirit of the other gentlemen's and your comment, it's, we have some choke points. The Lewis and Clark Bridge is a choke point.
Yeah.
And that, uh, Woodland to Calama is a choke point. We do a lot of talking about it.
But not much ever happens.
Oh, gee, yeah.
But in this case, we can talk about it a lot. It's still nothing will happen because it's just such a, it's just such a bad spot. I mean, physically.
Well, the point I'm trying to make also is that we, we don't prioritize things in the government arena because that's not how you buy favors. So like we were spending over, I think twenty five million to make that fly over the train into, uh, into the golf course in Kelso, and that impacts a few people compared to the traffic on I five. So we're gonna maybe do twelve million for abandoned on I five and twenty six for here. I'm looking at that and it, it just doesn't, it doesn't add up. I tried to move, uh, that twenties, that, that, I, that flyover dollars down to Exit twenty one kind of thing. And unfortunately, it's that those dollars are compartmentalized.
Yeah.
And, and you can see from a political standpoint, I shouldn't, I shouldn't even try to do that because the bulk of the electorate in my district is in Kelso, not in Woodland.
Yeah.
But I don't care about those things. You, you gotta do the right thing.
Yeah. And it's a, that Woodland is just a, there's a no right thing to do there. It's just how, you know, there are just so many things against expansion there. Physical things.
Yeah, now the, the port project I saw, which is the, the long, the, you know, the, the long-term plan would have the bridge going on the west side of I five. So you, you're actually increasing the access on the on the bottoms side. And of course, that's a double-edged sword because there are plans to put like twenty five hundred houses down in the bottoms and, um,
It's gonna take a big bridge.
It, it, well, not only that, it, there's also at some point, we pave all the good farmland over and then what?
Yeah.
And that's because we can drive and that's sort of what was my comment on the taxation. We're gonna tax the, the production end to subsidize the consumption end. And I'm like, hmm.
None of it makes sense.
Yeah. Well, have, have we blown up the lines yet?
Go ahead, Ron.
So for planning, I haven't looked, but we have a county comprehensive plan. Each of the cities has a comprehensive plan. We should be able to look at the comprehensive plan and see what is the solutions that we are aiming for. And be able to prioritize accordingly by lining up all these little entities of the, the cities, the counties, the state and feds on something that would align rather than the grant here and a grant there and a grant here that just is potshots at a solution. I'm, I'm really puzzled in, uh, you know, if our independent businesses and our corporations, the warehouses and the others operate in the same way, we wouldn't have business because you throw money in a corner rather than add a, a plan.
I think Woodland was just finishing there. Ours is, I want to say two thousand twenty six. I don't have building planning here, but I think ours is due right around two thousand twenty six and they're planning to start working on it.
Yeah, those plans tend not to include, I, I think I know the, the, the current county plan and it, it's very high level. Um, doesn't detail anything like maybe we should have a county policy on traffic circles or some such thing, but there, there are territorial things all over the place.
Right.
And wash that and, uh, you know, the number, you, you remember the comment you told us about your trip? I think it was to the, uh, talked to, uh, the, was it the Corps of Engineers regarding they were happy to talk to you versus talking to the collaborative?
Yeah.
That's the thing, a collaborative, we, we've got, how many people in the collaborative? Three dozen?
Yeah.
Something like that. You, you can't make a decision with three dozen people.
And that's right on, is that again, in my old days, I had a nationally known planner educating us at the university. And he said, you can do all the planning with the people you want. But the right thing is when you do the plan that says, how do you get traffic and access to areas in the most logical, economical way, then the people will adjust. But if you try to look forward at it, none of them have an answer to which way to go. You take a, an overview of the entire area, Woodland area or, or these areas and say, what should the plan look like? And which is his most economically efficient way to get transportation and everything else will fit back in.
That, that's, that's my experience in life. I remember moving to San Diego before I five was completed from, uh, San Clemente to San Diego. And then when it was built, I remember going on the freeway and there were three cars with me, four lanes. And I asked myself, what brain dead idiot spent all these dollars for this? And now that same freeway comes right up to an intersection where there are at least twelve lanes across and it still gets jammed. You build it, you build transportation, infrastructure, they will come.
Right. Planning is planning and getting an outlook and having people understand why you're doing it rather than asking everybody how I should do it because you'll never get the right answer.
The problem there is how do you get the funding to do it? Because it comes from the people and what, you know, e- even, even in school, people say, well, why do I have to take a math class? I don't plan to be a mathematician. And to me, that's that's a question that's always improperly answered.
Well, it's the same, you're, you're, you're at, one point you just made, the freeway, Interstate five, but at, in the Woodland area, that's a national disaster waiting to happen.
Yep.
And what the heck is the problem that we can't get our citizens and our county and our people telling the state to hell with everything else. We aren't going to invest in anything until you fix that road because we don't like to have a parking lot out there on Interstate five.
You got my support on that.
One of the yeah, I, I really don't disagree with anything you pointed out. One of the things that the cities and the county run into and, and if you listened, I was down at the last Woodland. I think the last Woodland meeting and they were going over their, their plan and their growth management. Part of it because they're a GMA, uh, city that they were writing a plan to meet Department of Commerce expectations. You know what I'm saying? You're, you're given, this is what you gotta have. So you're writing around, not around what you're and it involves the, the cities and the counties. We all struggle with this. You're not writing around what you see in your area. You're writing around what you're given from outside a lot of times. And it makes it difficult. There's times I'd just like to draw them a picture and send it to them, Ron.
Correct.
Yeah.
Many of the decisions are made with myopia and, and emotion. They're and that's kind of why we have the trouble we have.
Yeah. I, I, I'll just comment further on that because I was listening to that down there and I, I'm going, this is in, insane because they're, they're I'm going, this is in insane because they're, they're. Well, I'll just give you my take on it. They're, they're saying under, we expect this kind of, using Department of Commerce numbers. We expect this kind of growth in woodland and you're going to have to have. This much housing that can. It divides into three income tiers. So you need this much housing and this income tier and this and this down here. And and you're developing your housing based on. What they can afford. So if you're in the lowest income tier, you got to live in like a townhouse or apartment style thing in in downtown. I don't know how that's not discrimination. The the rich folk, you can go out in the rural areas and build. I don't know how they get away with that. I spent quite a few years in mortgages. I don't think we could have. Could have delineated things like that, but but they can and that's a struggle for any community. I mean woodland. I don't think they necessarily want to do that, but they're directed. You gotta, you gotta show you could make this kind of housing in this different. Things. And I just think that's, I I don't agree with that. I think woodland should be able to make their own decisions, but. But that's one of the struggles we deal with.
Not only should woodland make its own decision, it should be the the. Builders, the investors make their own decision in woodland.
If they know what the market is looking for, they'll build it. But you're, you're. I don't agree with government trying to create a market. I just think that's nonsense. The market is driven from the consumer, not, not from the top down. That's just a mandate.
And with respect to housing, a thing that's not understood. By most folks is. Any housing helps the affordability of housing. So you build a five hundred thousand. Square foot house, five hundred. Thousand dollar house. And yes, that's not really affordable for everybody, but it's affordable to someone who is in the lower housing tier. And they move up to the higher housing tier. The only way that model really breaks down is when the pressure is unsatisfiable. That is to say. You got people from Vancouver moving up. You got people from Portland moving up and so they'll snap that five hundred thousand dollar house like that. So there is no move up. But. Any attempt we make to control that just ends up making it worse.
Anything else? Okay. Ain't nothing, we will adjourn. Thanks for. Spending a morning with us.